Hey, we'll hang it to me, start for most things.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I had an opportunity to review the June 7th, 2022 minutes?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 7th, 2022.
Any discussion? All those parents say aye?
Aye.
Audience call, anyone? Important is? Scott?
Before I forget about it, do I need to call for the dumpsters for cleaning up hanging over?
I've already made contact.
You get, okay, I, okay. So you got that? They're gonna probably drop it off Friday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll work.
Two.
Yeah, two, then.
Return them out if you can, too.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want one from Kurt again, or no?
If they'll bring it, I have one, I got enough stuff to fill one of them up right now.
Well, definitely have to bring, if you got one already filled up, they'll bring one. They just didn't want to leave it forever.
Sure.
Go ahead, if they, if they'll go ahead and bring it, I'll probably possibly fill it up, and there might be another one. They might have to bring another one before, because I got a whole bunch of metal. I'd bring it. Okay. Well, we've been kind of jumping around on different projects, like today, took Bobcat over this morning before lunch and cleaned the curving on October, November with the Bobcat burn. It does a good job, it's a messy job for whoever's on the Bobcat, but it does a good job. And then we spent the afternoon finishing up all the mowing.
Does it throw stuff on them?
Yes, you say it's slinging it, here it has up there.
It'll work better when stuff's wetter, but you're not.
Well, that's what I thought, because I hit dry stuff and it gets in your mouth and all that. But then the wet stuff, I couldn't even see out of my glasses, it's just peppered mud, so. But it does a good job. We took it back home in the white dump truck. Seagull worked alright. And then I went around, I'm gonna do Sycamore next. And one thing I didn't do over there, which wasn't as bad, I went ahead and sprayed weed killer around the whole subdivision in the curving. So, kill the vegetation and then start on that next one. See, last Friday, we had six of our little white dump truck loads full of trees from the wind that we had. And I didn't finish one down here by miracles at the top of Beech Hill Road until yesterday. I just kind of had it laid off to the side, we ran out of time, but I don't know if you guys pay any attention?
It looks excellent.
The big rocks that you.
And these nice.
We got, we're not done, I'm gonna go around the corner a little ways and be off. And then Ezra had an idea, you know, you told me to ask me to dig that out back here. I think we'll fill up with number twos, because it's easier to walk on with kids. What if we surround it with them rocks, people sit on them and stuff?
Sure, sure.
That's what you use on their legs.
Yeah, and they're nice rocks.
Oh, yeah, that, there's a nice big one, but I could not, it's all the back, they'll do it, pick it up, put it in the dump truck. But it'd be a nice for over here. Problem. Not just got another idea for? And we've been starting on tree trimming, it's been hot, so we've, we've done that a couple of mornings, like, so far, we've done Lottery Lane. And we'll go over on Second Street, Crow Street's bad, if you guys know any limbs that's over the road, like a school bus would hit. We're just trying to get it out of the way before, I know schools, it'll be here before you know it, so. And some of the things, probably people don't, you guys might not realize, but we, we had to have some of our pumps worked on. And Keith knows what that costs, and it's really expensive, well, two of our older lift stations are above ground pumps. And Stuart actually rebuilds them for us. And we've got four ready to go sitting there that he's rebuilt. I thanked Keith to tell you that bill on one of them is about four or five thousand dollars. So, just kind of stuff I don't really talk about, but that's stuff that he can do, so we can do. Like the Bobcat treatment plant, the drive motor went out of it. So, I didn't take it to Bobcat, because it's probably ten or twelve thousand dollars. We'll do it ourselves, we've already got it tore down, we're having trouble getting the drive motor, but I'd say five or six thousand dollars is what we're doing. And we still have the other Bobcats, so it's not like we're without a Bobcat.
How many hours are you mowing a week?
It depends on how many, like, today. See, Ezra's gone to, we only had, we was off Monday and Ezra's had eye surgery and Lawrence for two days, he was off, and then Lawrence is off for two days, so. We mowed all afternoon today, after we done the street cleaning, we took lunch and then.
Had to everybody?
Well, the people that were, not me and Danny, Stuart was cleaning up the equipment that we got all dirty this morning from the street cleaning, so me and Danny went around and mowed Farms Park and Rainbow and the Water Tower and get that out of the way. It just just depends on how many people's mowing. But there's about, this is twenty acres, I know there's asphalt and stuff here, we're, we probably mow about thirty acres of grass.
In town?
Yeah. And we could go kind of beyond, I mean, I mow the side of the road, clear to Logan's Point, that's, you know, it's just, I did like tall grass. They did come and paint the Christmas fixtures.
They got that done?
Yeah, they put Rust-Oil on it and come back in a couple of days and we got them to paint and they loaded them on the trailer and they put them in a new barn, and they said they'd come back in a few months and put lights on them.
Probably about fifty new sculptures.
Yeah, it's, I mean, they looked really good, so we had a good group of guys come out and do that. I think I told you, we put new gates up over at the garage, I haven't painted them yet. Where somebody tried to break in years ago. And we did pour a couple, me and Ezra and somebody else, I'll just, we poured a couple concrete slabs.
So we don't, we don't, we still haven't hired anybody to like do hours for Saturday and Sunday for.
No, because forever, we've, we just, I have, I just said, leave it unlocked in the morning on Saturday.
Are we having trouble with any type of dumping over there? I mean, I know we have cameras everywhere.
Not too bad, once in a while, you know, like the scrap metal, because I, I know that, I have them hiding, I said, you can put metal back there, because Kurt should give us money for it, so. It'd be nice if we had one there all the time, because I think people would bring a lot more if there was a place to put it. No, I, I'd like to, I mean, we always had somebody work there before, it'd make me feel better if somebody was there, if you find somebody that wants to work.
How many hours would that be?
It was ten hour week job, I think, six on, nine to three on Saturday and twelve to four on Sunday is what it is. Now, Harley Stucker told me that he'd like to work if I ever find anything for him to do.
Yeah, he's asked me a couple times.
And that, I, I haven't asked him, but I will if, if, that's up to you guys.
And we paid that position out of?
It was never paid in my time. Now, Keith would.
And I'm trying to think where it was, what we took it out of.
Ken would probably know, but we had one for years. It was ten hour a week, you know.
Recycle? Do we do that recycling? When have you paid out of it?
Spend too long?
I can find out.
Yeah, if you can find out, and, I mean, I, I was over there the other day, because I had, you know, somebody that stopped me and was concerned.
Yeah.
So, you know, we.
That's my, I usually shut it on the weekends.
But you were out of town.
And I, I did not have anybody, it's, it's my fault, but I just forgot. You know, luckily, we do have cameras, but still, there's not, shouldn't be an invitation.
Yeah, right. Well, let's look and see, because I mean, you know, right now's gonna be a busy time, and, and if we're gonna be having that clean, it would be nice if we could get somebody over there, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I could, yeah, if we find out, I mean, I can ask him.
Yeah, we might check to see if you've got somebody that's available that can be interested in the position, and let's let Keith see.
I'll, I'll talk to him, because he will come over to the mom or his guy or something.
But let's let Keith see the funds are there first.
Right.
Yeah, because I'm not sure what they.
I'll see where it used to be paid for, I don't know where they paid for it.
And I do have, I know there's a lot of brush over, but they, they're supposed to be here middle of July.
And we'd only need that position filled until what the?
November.
First of November?
Something.
And I think in October, yeah.
Yeah. I think March or April to, whenever, whenever you start mowing like this year, I think everybody mowed a little later, I think.
Right.
Maybe it's last year, I don't know. But I think that's all I have. Unless you guys got a question?
I've got one thing. Did you find anything out yet about the water meter for master meter over there? I just threw that at you two days ago, but.
No, I called Bobby and told him I wanted it pop.
Have it cocked over spot.
I, I do, I do not have a six inch meter, the max says it's six inch, I don't know if that's something they got in stock over here.
Just so everybody knows, what we're thinking about doing is putting.
Timothy Trinney's looking at.
On one master meter, we've talked about it for a while, but it won't be, it'd be way too costly to put that on an auto read meter. So just make that a manual, just like, there'll be other ones throughout the town, they may have just a few meters, you still have to read those.
Yeah.
No different than our.
CBS and nursing homes.
You'll have some of those that you just have to manually read, that's going to be one of them. But it's a lot less expensive to do that, but that'll eliminate reading and replacing forty meters, I think there's forty units back there.
Forty, fifty, yeah.
So they all be in a master and then?
So as soon as you pull in that street, there'll be a meter that they'll read, that's just one meter for the entire subdivision, the whole water main goes back there.
And it's up to the landlord to charge?
We already do that for the trailer court, but the way that was ran, thirty years, we have three smaller meters that we do have on radio read, because they're, they're small, two inch.
Yeah.
Two inch meter, but this is a six inch, I hate to think it was a six inch auto read might cost, and we, and we look at both with just a note.
See what's the difference is.
Make that decision once we see it.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if you have that for now.
Ain't gonna be any size, because we haven't.
While Scott's here and talking, I was gonna wait and do bring this an old business, but it'll be here to bring up with him now, because he met with me down there last week, and Kenny's talked about this for a while, the, a Reshaw Blevins fencing, finally made contact with the guy, did you get to talk to him too? Okay, worked out really well, he's just like everyone else, he had two crews going. Ran, got a whole crew, basically was left him, he's just old, he doesn't have the crew, don't really do it. But he, he did come up with a good idea that would benefit us, there's another company, C2, Scott and I met with the C2 Construction that met us down here the other day, that I just happened to stumble across, they do fence jobs, and I seen them on Facebook. So, got hold of them, ended up being Jacob Cruiser, which was one of the musicians, took out a standard part, him and his dad have a construction business that they have for a while. And nice guys, they came down and met with Scott and I, they was very thorough. The unfortunate thing for them is, is materials are now way more than what they were when Blevins quoted. Here's the good news, Blevins is willing to still honor his material costs, because he's got a contract with his supplier. He can get the materials at his cost for, for the other company. Where they can't get it, because they will, his supplier will honor the, the cost that he had already quoted. The overall work is still about four thousand dollars higher than our original bid, that's what it came back at. But here, here's what they came back, the materials are roughly fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, it's a little less than that. But it's fourteen thousand five hundred dollars approximately, he said there might be a few odd ends that we would still need. And if, if the council would approve that, we could have that drop shipped directly at our sewer treatment plant, and then contract with C2 to do the construction. So that's on everybody, but keep in mind, we've got a FEMA grant, we got a grant right now that's set up through Troy Morgan that time's ticking, so. We've got somebody that's willing and able to do it, he said within a couple of weeks he could get it done.
Yeah, there's another tree that just fell, so. Took out a bunch more just here last year.
Now, are we gonna be able to take some of these trees out when they're falling on our fence?
We got a couple more.
They already fell.
So, so what we, what we also done, in, in this guy's defense, back when we did all this quoting, if you guys recall, we went through and had Larry Lowry, what was his name? Thomas Lowry.
Yeah.
Tom Lowry went around our entire fence and cleared that whole swath about six feet out, all the way around the fence at that time. That's grown a little bit again.
Right.
It's not near as bad, so I couldn't imagine being near as high, but I shared with Scott the other day, there's a couple guys out there that maybe, this guy asked if we could get anybody to go through and do something like that for us, that would help out tremendously, because he said if I gotta spend a lot of time cutting a bunch of trees instead of installing fence.
Yeah, the effort, north end, he's gonna be on a lot of brush, he gonna be a lot of brush, so.
So we need to see about, that, that'd be another additional, but we've already done that before, and we need to do that regularly anyway, so I don't think that's because of, it's just, you're, you're two years late.
Because we don't want a brand new fence up there that's gonna keep.
Have trees fall.
Our weed killer will not touch whatever's up here, but we've got some stuff coming as of today that will.
And you, you gotta be careful putting the weed killer on, on that high bank up there.
Yeah, you don't want to erode it.
Erode the bank away and cause you other problems, so. That's a lot to think about and address, but if, if you guys do it, this, this, this money is not good from anyone else, I can tell, if you call them price fencing, it's it's just not there, cost of materials are higher.
Right, was that?
Up to fourteen five, but it's less than that, I think it's like fourteen two eighty something.
How much was it rent?
Twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars, not exactly what Kenny I sent you that day.
But it's got a time period, I remember that, you said or Lucy said.
Is Blevins and C2 gonna try to do some kind of contract between them two?
Blevins is just gonna get material for him, that's all he's gonna do, he'll do the contract for the town, the town will pay Blevins just to drop ship material, when he puts the material on the ground, he's out of it.
He's just. When we get halfway done, he said, oh.
Well, he's not really, the materials are the ones, he's not doing anything.
That's what I'm saying, what if, so he's gonna drop all the material?
All of the material, the entire material package would be bought and paid for, dropped to the treatment plant, and then we would contract with someone else for labor.
And that's about half of what, fourteen five is about half of what it costs right now. So he's doing a big, that's a big favor to the town.
I'll tell you what his original, Kenny, answer your question I had.
I don't know the guy, but.
The original quote that he had sent to us that we got our grant on was twenty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. And right now, if, as it would stand, C2 and them are gonna be roughly thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, so you're roughly forty-eight hundred dollars higher than two hundred dollars higher, somewhere in that range.
That will come out in the year.
Okay, I'll sue, because we can't, we can't ask for more on our grant, it's the bottom number of twenty-nine three thirty.
But gosh, to get that down, that's, that's just great, I mean, we're getting a whole new fence.
That's a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Just unfortunately, it's still not a hundred percent, that's part of luck of their own.
Does that include gate?
It includes three gates. It's the gate at the.
And they're actually on top of the hill, they're, they're gonna extend the fence farther than what it goes now, so the gate will go across that road there.
So do you need to investigate this a little more, or are you asking for?
I'm asking three, we've been beating as kicking as can down the road, and the longer we kick it, the higher the prices are gonna go.
They're not gonna motion, right?
I want a motion.
Yeah.
I, I, Scott, you agree, you met, you feel good about it, I know Kenny's asking, but.
We're gonna lose the grant.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we get the material from Blevins and hire somebody else to do the work.
Up to fourteen five.
Up to fourteen five. You guys have been working on this a year, I've been working on it two years.
Any discussion? All those parents say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Sorry, that was long-winded, but I wanna make sure while you were here, Scott, that information is.
And I understand it, yeah.
So, do we need to make a motion to approve having the C2 Construction do the position?
Do the, do the work.
And are they sure they're gonna do it?
Hundred percent, they wanna do it, they'll get us a contract together.
And they're out of sea.
If you wanna wait and approve that whenever we come, but it's gonna take a couple, we have, it'll take a couple of weeks.
I'll wait till we get the contract, they're not gonna do anything till.
I have it in writing, I agree. We're just gonna order on material right now, is basically what we're doing, so.
Did you hear anything from Limpson?
I haven't heard anything.
Hi, Anthony.
Yeah, you met with him there on May, so. Thanks.
No problem.
Actually, I figured, I'll, I'll, in case he gets a call since he's here.
I don't have here as much to say. We got approved for a grant, and we're gonna buy another Satoxa with it, a field treatment that you can test for drugs with. It's that way, two full-time guys will have one, so evening shift, morning shift. Other than that, we're just staying busy, trying to ride tune a car, and then we'll send gas, this guy frustrated us, so.
You noticed?
I did notice that, so. Any questions, comments, complaints?
Did you get the grant from?
J C J-TAC, it's Christian Snyder is who's in charge of it.
Yeah.
You guys got your pads in that area?
The what?
Are the pads, the?
Oh, yeah, our mattress, please.
Is it?
Yeah, I'll show you pictures of this.
Thank the college for that, because they kept a lot of money for that, appreciate them doing that.
Well, we've used it every week since they've been up there.
Apparently, okay.
It's a lot bigger than what it looks in the picture.
Oh, yeah. Neat. Looks good.
Yeah, don't people use them?
We just train them.
You hadn't stacked, you didn't have them laid out like that, they were all stacked.
So we have it all sorted out.
Good, it's good.
We'll put the next, next week or so, meet with the gentleman on Max's grant regarding the vehicles. So, share that with him. Looking for a date and time he can come up here and help me out with it, so.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. We just have two things. Number one, our Visa bill didn't get put on our accounts payable, because I didn't have a receipt from Scott yet. And it's due, it's for three hundred ninety-one dollars and seven two cents. It's for two pitching machines that he purchased, actually was, the pitching machines were, they're being funded and paid for by the trustees office, so it's part of the money that he spent for that. But he used our card through Amazon, and I didn't have the receipt when I filled, when I closed out our bills, so we weren't gonna be able to do it until Scott, and he just brought me the receipt tonight, so.
So we need to add three ninety-one?
You don't need to add it, you just gotta give me permission to add it, it'll be on the next accounts payable, so it keeps it simple. You're just giving me authorization, because there is a due date to the First Financial Bank to pay this by when is that? Six twenty-six, so before the next meeting, so. So if I get an approval.
I'll make a motion to give you approval to pay three hundred ninety-one dollars and seventeen cent Visa bill.
Any discussion?
Thank you, guys. Next thing for me. We've got, we're working, obviously, Ken and I are doing behind the scenes, honestly, most of the can, but did a lot of our worksheets, budget worksheets, get them submitted and in by the thirtieth, it's a lot of work to get that taken care of, but she's working hard to get it, so. We're making that happen, and then we need some times, Ken asked me to propose some times, while we're all here tonight, but to have our, kind of our work sessions for the budget a little bit, so. Tentatively, thinking like July fourteenth and July twenty-first, if you guys could jot it down, you don't have to answer right now, check your calendars. If those don't work, treat them, I'm gonna put you in charge of trying to follow up, if you'd like to do that, so.
I will.
If you can look at those, but tentatively, let's just fill those Thursday days.
July the fourteenth, I have a table in mind.
If you got another idea, we can go with it, but I can give you his number.
Anything else for Keith? Old business, go green committee?
Okay, I've got three members that was like to set them up. Issue being two of them can meet on Monday, one on Tuesday, I don't know the pleasure of the board, if you'd want me to kind of coordinate with a couple of them coordinating, kind of combine something, or see if we can work other days somehow, or any thoughts you guys want to have? I mean, I'm willing to.
So two can meet on Monday, one can meet on Tuesday.
Right. What about Wednesday? Can do Wednesday, I know the other two said Mondays pretty much, yeah.
I do every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, except for these meetings, what I do at the job.
Right, that's what I thought, so. What's your thoughts, girls? It's been a struggle.
I could do any Thursday or.
Let's see, what the other two say, they're well locked into Monday, so I don't know. So, Monday was the only day you could do it. It's probably sports related, isn't it?
That's true, probably just for this month, July to be some time off possibly.
Just see if that's gonna change down the road, because I wanna get this going, we've been at it forever.
It took us a year to get ours going.
Websites? Training's still going on, I don't think I've got at least two or three weeks of training left, and then all the wrecked portable Forte, the building is all taken care of now, should be all, all the work done, it's proved. So, I should do something for the next three or four days on the Forte stuff. And the, the machine that you wanted with the dock, it's not compatible to, yeah, it's not compatible. So you're gonna get the ones that are less expensive, I think there was one fifty five, and two of those. So, the website's going pretty good, I think, we're, I think we're on schedule, I haven't talked to Scott or Linda about training, has Linda mentioned anything about the training?
She hasn't mentioned much, other than when they've had it, I think her and Ken were gonna have a training the other day, but it was during our closing conference call that you and I came to sit on, and I, she wouldn't, she didn't wanna miss that, so they scheduled it now, I think, for two, three next week, so.
APR plan? I just had that as a table.
Yeah, because, yeah, we're still trying to get some stuff together, get some ideas, we have to have another meeting to put it together.
Any other old business? New business? Amending the water ordinance regarding sales tax?
This is new, this has came down from the state that they have eliminated tax, sales tax on utility for the water utility, so doesn't really impact us a whole lot, it's a little tricky right at the moment, your bills come down, when it passes, my bills, but that's what it basically was.
It is ordinance number twenty-two-two-nine, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Hanover, Indiana, the Water Works ordinance of the Town of Hanover, Indiana, specifically ordinance twenty-nine nineteen, or twenty-nineteen dash four, sorry. Whereas the Town of Hanover, Indiana has, uh, established, it's structured, and has in operation its multiple water facility for the purpose of distributing water in said town and areas adjacent thereto. Whereas the Town Council of the Town previously adopted ordinance two thousand nineteen dash four, establishing the water rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the Water Works of the Town of Hanover. Whereas Indiana Legislature, Legislature passed a new law, HB one zero zero two, that refills the utility tax receipt, which requires the removal of this tax from the town's current rates. This law takes effect July first, twenty twenty-two, however, you will not see this tax alter utility bills until August, the August statement, which reflects usage during June fifteenth through July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two and thereafter. Whereas the Town Council desires to comply with the new law and remove the utility tax, receipt tax from its rates for the next billing cycle to follow passage of this ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Hanover, Indiana. The Water Works of the Town of Hanover, Indiana, rate and charges shall be amended only to remove the utility receipt tax from its current rates. The town's water utility office shall take the necessary steps to remove the utility receipt tax from the town's utility customers during this billing cycle. Statements reflecting usage of July first, twenty twenty-two forward, additionally, the customers receive, will receive on the first two bills following the passage of this ordinance, each customer savings associated with the removal of this tax and legal statement. All ordinances and parts of this ordinance in conflict, care with, and hereby replaced, provided however, that the existing schedule of rates and charges for water services shall remain in full force and effect. This ordinance shall be effective on water billing dated August twenty-seventh, this ordinance is effective dispatch of this day. Any questions to approve?
This is to approve first reading, or to approve period?
Period.
I make a motion to approve, uh, the ordinance amending the water regarding sales tax, I think you said it was twenty dash twenty-two, right?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two dash...
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those papers, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have amendment here for CA, which is Construction Administration, and for RPR, which is Resident Project Representative. Compensation for professional services described in Article two point D through two point F shall be, shall be on time and materials basis in the, not to exceed the amount of eight hundred ninety-six thousand six hundred dollars as follows. Engineer may allocate dollars between the individual tasks within the not to be exceeded fee, however, the total not to be exceeded fee shall not be exceeded without prior written approval of the owner. Construction Administration phase, three hundred sixty-two thousand six hundred dollars. Resident Project Representative, which is RPR, five hundred seventeen thousand. Post-construction fee is seventeen thousand dollars, and this is not to exceed eight hundred ninety-six thousand six hundred dollars. All other terms and conditions contained in this agreement shall remain unchanged and continue in full force and effect. This amendment to the agreement may be executed by counterparts, each of which shall be deemed to be original, and all such counterparts together shall constitute one in the same amendment and agreement. An electric or assembly signature, and it's equivalent in and binding as the original signature. So, I need approval to pass, uh, an amendment for CA and RPR.
And so that each use, since it's not on the agenda, so that you guys know what the situation was, this is the reason our meeting on Tuesday was moved to tonight, because they were waiting on those final numbers, we can get it, put it into our pre-closing, our closing bids, um, documentation, because they were, Baker, Kelly, they were compiling all the information. In a nutshell, it is money that's already been accounted for, in our loan, in our SRF loan, it's not really a big difference, the major change that should, that would be there is it's clearing it up so that, um, they allowed in this project way more time than is normally allotted, they would expect this project to be completed typically in about, what'd they say, three hundred and eighty days? Um, but they've allowed six hundred and forty. The reason they allowed six hundred and forty is because of lead times right now on materials, ductile iron, um, Wade just told us the other day in our conference, and I called, or we were sitting here, was, uh, one of the pumps or items might be out eighteen months before we, they can get it. So, they can't do certain phases of the project, so they'll be idle, so while they're idle, this will be idle, they won't be spending money and representing, they'll just aren't gonna drive down here, sit here and wait on the project.
That's worst case scenario.
It's worst case scenario, so it's changed, because the time's changed when they recommended the six hundred and forty days from where we're originally were, that's what they announced about. Same hourly rate, same everything, um, and it's been in our numbers, so you've already approved the numbers anyway.
We're just kind of re-appropriating stuff.
Exactly, so that you can see it out in clear for the Wesler's fees.
Right.
For that, for the services that we asked for them to provide for us.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those papers, aye?
Aye. Thanks for the explanation.
Yeah.
Well, you just thought it was another million dollars.
Why, just... You were just like, okay, I totally...
Sewer adjustment.
Okay, it's like a sewer adjustment here for adjacent area, Marine Street had old plumbing pipes leaking, all are new and replaced, and he's requesting us a sewer adjustment for four hundred eighty-two dollars and six cents. I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those papers, aye?
Aye.
Counts payable?
I make a motion to approve the counts payable vouchers in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-one cents. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those papers, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Announcements, Hanover Carport will be Tuesday, July fifth, twenty twenty-two, at five thirty P.M., here at the Hanover, uh, before the Town Council meeting at six o'clock, here at the Hanover Community Center, two hundred Spruce Lane, Hanover, Indiana. Town Hall will be closed Monday, July fourth, for Independence Day. Cleanup Hanover Days will be July sixteenth through July twenty-fourth, and is free service for Hanover residents living inside the town limits. A flyer with more information will be arriving in the June and July water bills. Any other announcements?
I would, uh, just keep, I don't need to get it on here, so you can read it every time, because you did a great job reading. The August fifth and sixth, our concert, um, just keep that going on a regular, make sure everybody hears about it, sounds exciting, it's got great traction, Scott and I have been going to some, I've missed the last meeting, um, but it's moving forward well, getting a lot of support and traction, people's already buying tickets.
I've been a lot of hours down there.
So, a lot of people are excited, I think, about the Crashers coming down Friday night.
Right.
It's a big band to come in here on Friday night, and then...
It'll be a big crowd.
Yeah, yeah, and then Saturday, uh, for the car show, obviously, that's exciting for us, I don't know if it's, is it our first car show ever in Hanover Park that you're aware of? But, we're calling it the first one, I, I never knew of one, so, um, so we have that going on, and then again, music that night, so, pretty exciting to have all that.
Yeah, because they buy those tickets online, or?
They can buy them online at Ventbright, um, you know, it's been shared all over Facebook.
It's on, it's on our...
On our town site, it's all over the place, so...
Everywhere.
Get your tickets.
And get it early, get your seat.
Yeah, get here early, get your seat, so, yeah, should be plenty of food and a good time.
Any other announcements?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those papers, aye? Thank you.